All right, everybody, everybody else, we're gonna go ahead and start. I'm gonna call to order this regular city council meeting for May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Sarah, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Council Rittma.
Here.
Council Caswell.
Here.
Council One. Council White.
Here.
Council Witterin.
Present.
Council Glance.
Present.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Do we have any agenda updates, Mr. Ray Young?
Yes, we do, Mayor. On the consent agenda item three point three, which is a resolution regarding placement of two projects on the Metro Regional Transportation Plan, is off the consent agenda, and we will put it down as a new number seven and bump staff communications to eight.
And then three point four moves to three point three?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comment at this time. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comment. I'm gonna open up public comment. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make a comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody, anybody in council chambers? Go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Lauer.
Oh, hang tight, Paul, sorry, I skipped you. We'll get to you at the end. Go ahead, Mr. Lemey.
Good evening. My name is John Lemey. I live here in Troutdale at nine thirty-one Southwest Sunset Way, and I am the chair of the Town Center Advisory Board. Back in March, we brought before you Capstone Partners to develop the area down here behind the outlet mall. At that time, it was suggested here in the council that there be a representative of either the TCAP or C Council sitting in on negotiations. And I just wanted to keep that before you. I haven't heard anything since that, and so I just wanted to keep that before you, that we still feel that that would be beneficial.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else in council chambers wishes to speak? Now's the time. Go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record. Nobody in council. Mr. Wilcox, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hit the mic button but forgot to unmute the screen. Paul Wilcox, Troutdale. I have some very brief comments on some of the consent agendas. I don't understand three point three, the Second Street Bridge, is taken off consent agenda, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And three point one, Sarah covered my corrections to the public comments in the minutes, so got that covered. Three point two, just have a question about why the IGA has been signed so late in the fiscal year, since there's only a month left and it applies to this current fiscal year. And three point four, looks like a really good program, but my issue with it being on consent agenda is I don't think anything involving financial expenditures by the city should be on consent agenda. And I saw that calls for a five thousand dollar fee every year for the next five years. That pretty much covers it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Anybody else on Zoom or in council chambers? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. I'm gonna go ahead and read the consent agenda. Actually, Council Rittma, if you wouldn't mind, if you could read through the consent agenda. So reminder, three point one's moved off to number seven, and three point four becomes three point three.
All right, incentive agenda, three point one minutes, April twenty-fifth, regular meeting. Three point two, resolution, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Metro and the City of Troutdale that establishes the responsibilities of both parties in implementing the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, Metro and Local Government Annual Waste Reduction Plan. And three point three, that was three point four, is now three point three, resolution, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the Backyard Habitat Certification Program and the City of Troutdale related to habitat enhancements on private and public properties. I move adoption.
Can I ask a question first? Is it, is it true that if the items with financial responsibility should not be on a consent agenda?
No, it's just Mr. Wilcox's opinion.
Okay.
Seconded by Counselor One. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Counselor Caswell?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, all opposed, signify by saying nay. All right, passes. Thank you very much. I'm gonna move on to agenda item number four, a proclamation. This week kicks off National Public Works Week, and as many of you know and are probably really sick and tired of hearing me say this, I have decided, for better or worse, to make Public Works my career for the past twenty years. I'm trying to find the proclamation. I forgot to have it pulled up. So give me one second, bear with me. Got it. So for the past twenty, going on twenty-two years, I've worked in the public works sector for various cities in and around Multnomah County. Currently, I work for the City of Fairview as our operations, Public Works Operations Manager. So this is a proclamation that's near and dear to my heart. So I'm gonna go ahead and start reading. City of Troutdale Proclamation, National Public Works Week, May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, connecting the world through public works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities into the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Troutdale. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, operators, and highly skilled staff at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting your nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Troutdale to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their community. And whereas, the year two thousand and twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Randy Lauer, Mayor of the City of Troutdale, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three as National Public Works Week in Troutdale, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to recognize our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and staff, and the vital contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. So thank you very much, and a special thanks to all of our public works professionals that work here at the City of Troutdale and all over Oregon and the country. All right, we're gonna move on to agenda item number five, an update from Metro Counselor Ashton Simpson. Mr. Ashton Simpson, the floor is yours. Sorry for the confusion. That's my fault.
How y'all doing today?
Good.
Good, good, good. I finally made it in front of you all. Do we have slides? Thank you. It's good to be here. It's a beautiful day.
It is.
It was a beautiful drive over. So when the slides come up, but in the meantime, I'll give a little background of me. So I live right down the street. I'm at one forty-eighth and Halsey, right behind Glendale Beer, so quick trip down, normally down Halsey. I was born and raised in Houston, served some time in the Air Force as a civil engineering technician, did eight and a half years, retired out in two thousand and fifteen with P issues in community development, cycled through a couple of nonprofits, as a planner and then executive director, and then moved on to this life.
So. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for having me, Mayor. So thanks for having me here today. I was sick in the fall, so I apologize for, or earlier on, so I apologize for not getting to you all, so. Thank you for having me here, so next slide. So again, I did all these things in the Air Force, that's my mom and my dad, my younger brother, my, my son, which he is ten going on seventeen. But I'm pretty sure y'all are all aware, and I've sworn in on the third of January this year, so a little over a hundred days in. So give me a little time to knock the rust off or kind of grow out of the green, I would say. Next slide. So some of my key priorities and what drives me to do this work are rooted in transportation and safety, jobs and workforce development. You can tap in there, economic development as well, resiliency and emergency preparedness. I think we all should play a hand in that, particularly with the earthquake, whatever it's gonna happen, but we should be prepared for that and any other type of natural disasters, fires, and, you know, smoke, ice, whatever's hitting us at any point. And also access to green spaces for East County residents. I look forward to connecting with you all to understand where our priorities overlap and how we can work together. Next slide. So I know you've probably seen the data on Metro Housing Bond, but I wanted to share a few updates on the numbers. Great news is, the great news is that Metro's housing bond is still on track to deliver what was promised to voters in two thousand and eighteen. In that vote, voters directed Metro to build thirty-nine hundred units of affordable housing around the greater Portland metro area. And as of now, more than five hundred and eleven homes have opened in Portland, Gresham, Tiger, and Beaverton, and fourteen hundred more are currently under construction around the region. That's, and more than one thirteen hundred are currently under, under design, design and permitting phases, excuse me. That's more than eighty percent of the way to the total unit goals, while only allocating roughly about fifty-five percent of the resources. Ultimately, I want to thank you all as voters for supporting this, and we spent the next several years trying to get at least twelve thousand people housed through this initiative, so thank you. Next slide. I like this production of the visual pipeline. I don't know if you all can see that. But as of December two thousand and twenty-two, there were thirty-four projects in the current housing bond pipeline representing thirty-two hundred, a little over thirty-two hundred new affordable homes. This is the equivalent of eighty-three percent of the thirty-nine hundred total unit production. And over twelve thousand units, or twelve hundred units in our pipeline will be affordable to very low affordable for those households whose income are below thirty percent of the area median income. About seventy-eight percent of that housing bond goes, bond's goal of sixteen hundred deeply affordable units. That's really less than, like, really, really below, almost at the poverty line. I mean, thirty percent AMI is about twenty-two thousand for a single individual or a household of thirty-two thousand dollars. Implementation partners are actively working on funding solicitations and plans to commit remaining funds. We expect all remaining funds to be committed by two thousand and twenty-four, and the final projects to break ground in two thousand and twenty-six. Next slide. So you can see that there, the blue line represents the collection of funds. And in two thousand and twenty-four, you start to see a drawdown of those funds, but the orange line represents the housing, and you see an uptick in the housing with the funds ultimately depleting at the end of two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the final construction ending in two thousand and twenty-eight. So the ramp-up was a period, there was a ramp-up period, so that represents that, that beginning line at two thousand and nineteen on the blue side, and we expect around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in dispersments from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-five, then dropping to twenty-three million in two thousand and twenty-six, and nothing after that. Next slide. As you know, to complement the housing bond, the Regional Supportive Housing Services Program fills in gaps and expands each county's existing homelessness system of care. It is one piece of the larger effort to address houselessness across the region. We are leveraging multiple public funding sources to connect people to permanent housing that is tailored to their needs for rental assistance and other stabilizing services. This includes healthcare and treatment services and culturally specific services that recognize how this crisis disproportionately impacts people of color. We've got some updates, updated numbers here as well, and well that I wanted to make sure to share with you today. And so far, working through the counties, regional funding helped place over twenty-two hundred people into permanent housing. We know we still have a long way to go. We see the state of things. Hopefully, we're gonna get on track here soon with the joint office and the counties. And through our county partners, regional funds have also helped at least nine thousand three hundred households already in the pipeline to become housing unstable to moving to houses, so we stabilized that many households. Next slide. And as a reminder, Metro is committed to keeping the region clean through our Red Patrol. We doubled our Red Patrol crews in the last year and now have six crews roving the entire region. And in the last three months, our crews are picking up about three tons of trash a day. Our average response time to a report, report is four days, and we regularly provide garbage service to areas where we know people are regularly camping and don't have access to garbage or recycling. We visit the Sandy River Delta, for example, quite regularly to ensure that people who live there have their garbage collected. I'd also like to talk to you about a few upcoming opportunities that I'm excited about. There is a rodeo happening at the Expo Center. I know it's a little sidebar, but there's a rodeo happening at the Expo Center for June tenth, June tenth weekend, on the seventeenth. I'm excited about it because it is the first ever rodeo ever at the Expo Center, so hopefully y'all get a chance to come out. And I also wanted to say that also this summer, we have opportunities for the Regional Transportation Plan engagement. This, that will happen the tenth through the twenty-fifth of July, and you will have an opportunity to review the draft parties and hit your comments down. Next slide. And so thanks to the voters, Metro is able to operate and maintain a hundred, a hundred and thirty-eight distinct parks and nature properties, including developed parks that serve some of the most diverse communities in the region. You can see these sites on the slide, Blue Lake Park, Oxbow Regional, as well as Cooper Mountain. On September twenty-ninth, the Metro Council awarded twelve grants totaling twenty million dollars, and this one-time grant program was funded by voters to invest in nature by passing the two thousand and nineteen Parks and Nature Bond. And I'll drop a note there. We do have large-scale community visiting grants, and I would encourage us in this part of the region to really take a look at that. I believe it was a thirty million dollar pot. We just went up for the first round of ten million, and we didn't have any applicants out of East County. All the projects were centered in Central City and one out West, so there's still twenty million dollars remaining in that pot. The next round should be around end of December, early January, so please get your projects lined up and make sure that they are, you know, you are the government partner, so connecting folks to nature, improving livability, things like that, so that we have some competition in the running out here. I'd love to see some more applications come out of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And importantly, for District One, Troutdale Metro contributed one point nine to the Sandy River Greenway, helping Troutdale rebuild a riverfront path connecting downtown to the Forty Mile Loop, a thousand acre, thousand acres natural area, and in a major industrial employment area. This fourteen-hundred-foot-long linear park features access to the river and restore riparian habitat along the river bank. This project is part of a larger urban redevelopment of a former industrial area. The redevelopment area is currently cut off from downtown Troutdale by the railroad road, and this project offers a safe alternative for vulnerable road users and a more direct connection between major destinations. Next slide. So I know I've heard that you've had some concerns about the Community Enhancement Grant. So I've got Noel Dobson here with me tonight, the Program Manager for Community Enhancement Grants, here with me this evening to help answer any questions for that. To begin, let's do a little overview. So the City of Troutdale administered, since, the program since two thousand and fifteen was established by the Troutdale Waste Management, more than four hundred and forty thousand dollars has been invested into the Troutdale community during this time. The council is grateful for your work on this, on the community's behalf. Metro states that Metro can either administer the program themselves or partnership with a community group, and we're excited to let you know that we're partnering with East County Rising Community Projects to administer this grant moving forward. This work is in alignment with their mission to create livable communities. Applications to be accepted around mid to late summer, and this is a proposed boundary based on discussion with stakeholders and Metro Code direction to enhance areas surrounding the facilities. The newly formed Grant Committee facilitated by East County Rising Community Projects will have an opportunity to approve or amend this boundary at the first meeting early this summer. The organization is forming the Committee of Community Members, and I will represent Metro on the committee. There are no funds, these funds are accrued, excuse me, these are the funds accrued since the City of Troutdale stopped administering the grant program, and not all funds will be awarded this fall, and the fund balance will be awarded out over the next couple of years. Next slide. And I just want to thank you all. I know this is my first time in front of you all, so I need to come out a little bit more, but I'm here to answer any questions, and I do have Noel with me.
Yeah, absolutely. You hit a bunch of hot-button items in one presentation, I'll say that. So no, I appreciate you coming out, and I was under the weather last week, so I missed our, our, our meeting that we had last week here at Troutdale, not you and I. So I get it, it's no big deal, but I appreciate you're here now. Let's first start and see if anybody on council has any questions for Counselor Simpson. Yeah, absolutely. Comments, questions, concerns?
Comment with a slight concern, I would say, is in one of your opening slides, you talked about your initiative, what's important to you, and your directives of work. You wanted to come up, so your first line there was safety. But as you went through all these lines, all these slides, you did not really address safety, which was a hot button for myself. And seeing what's happening in Portland and even Gresham, Troutdale being near and dear to my heart, constantly, safety is something I'm constantly bringing up to this council, to Ray, and just, it was odd that you brought it up to the first slide, but didn't really have anything of meat potatoes in the deck. So, just a comment.
I appreciate that, Counselor Witter.
Yes.
So for me, safety looks probably a lot different for you than it does for me. I believe safety is also rounded in the community aspect, so when I think of that, I often first think about, I came out of pedestrian safety and advocacy realm. But then I also grew up in an area where we didn't, we were not really safe from police, nor were we safe from the folks on our street. But I understood that what we were lacking and would make us safe were opportunities, work opportunities, job opportunities, and that's why I said, safety is a part of the work of economic development piece, because I feel like, and I understand, and the numbers show, that when folks have an opportunity and they have a way to make it, and they do train, and they do have a job where they can make a living, they don't do crazy things. And so I redirect, and I say, how do we invest in people so that we don't have safety issues? And so safety is a priority for me, but how we administer it and how it looks to us can be different, but we can have that along with that.
Yeah, Counselor Glance?
As I say, I have a list of questions. If somebody else wants to go first.
Oh, unload.
Okay, a couple of questions. On the thirty-nine hundred units, about how many people, from the Metro Housing Bill, about how many people will that service?
I mean, if we're talking thirty-nine hundred units, I don't know how many are multi, you know, multi-room, so we're talking couples. But on its surface, I can tell you at least thirty-nine hundred folks, but I can get a better answer for you by talking to our planning folks.
Okay. And then how many new units do we need in the metro area? And the reason I ask this is I've been following what's happening up in Seattle a lot, and they went through and did a wonderful assessment, and they said, we need twenty-one thousand new units in this city in the next two years. How are we gonna get there? And I often am concerned when we have, you know, the Governor's Housing Bill and the Metro and all these other kinds of things that we're just saying, we need more housing, but we don't have any, I would call it a KPI, anything that we're looking at that specifically says, here's how many we need. Are you aware of any studies or research that's been done by Metro or the region on how many new housing units we need?
I believe we need about thirty-three thousand new housing units, and I can fact-check that for you with our planning department. I believe that was, I'm trying to remember the plan, excuse me, you have to forgive me, but we do have that written down in Metro somewhere, and I can't get that to you.
I would love to see that.
My understanding also is this a little over thirty thousand dollars is what they believe the shortage of housing is in the.
Thirty thousand houses.
Starting, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you said dollars, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. More than thirty thousand dollars. But yeah, so your number was spot on.
Yeah, thirty. And that's region-wide, and I can say that we, we attempted to, we are attempting to address that through, we did a UGV land swap with the cities of, well, unincorporated City of Damascus and the City of Tiger, so that Tiger can absorb five hundred acres into the UGV to develop thirty-three thousand, or thirty-three hundred units of middle housing in a project called River Terrace two point oh.
Nice. I heard you mention the RID Patrol. What does that stand for?
Regional, region, regional illegal dumping teams or patrol, RID.
On the RTP Public Input Forum, will that be online? Will that be a series of meetings in person? What is the process for that?
I believe it's gonna be online. We just talked a little bit about that today. We want to get, we want to get out here and do more community outreach and development similar. Do you remember the transportation measure in two thousand and twenty, right before COVID hit? We were out in communities, oftentimes translating into multiple languages so that none, for English as a first language speaking families could attend. And so I think we're looking at some ideas, but I know that for sure the comments will, at least the online portion will be there.
Okay. And then my last question is, I'm wondering why, on the community enhancement grants, why was that pulled from Troutdale? And the reason I'm asking that very specifically is, East County Rising is a very political group, and that really doesn't have good optics to have a group that endorses candidates, also, you know, pulling a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from a program that was running just fine through the city of Troutdale.
Noel?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Shall I take it back here?
No, please, if you wouldn't mind, just coming up and then just stating your name for the record. And you both are sharing that microphone also.
Look, Council, my name is Noel Batson. I work for Metro with the Community Enhancement Grant. So I heard two parts to that question. The council decided in two thousand and twenty-one to decline to sign the IGA, so it was the city's decision to no longer administer the grant.
Correct.
And then, East County Rising, there's two separate organizations. East County Rising, as you're correct, does work on electoral politics. There's a separate organization, East County Rising Community Project. They're a five oh one C three charitable organization, not involved in electoral politics.
None of the same people?
They do have some of the same board members.
So same, same organization then? Basically, yes.
Organizations under five oh one.
Correct, but it's still the same influence from the same people. Correct, but it's still the same influence from the same people from both organizations.
I can't speak to their.
I think you just did though. Yeah, I think you just did speak to it though. So that's the problem, the problem, yes, you're absolutely a hundred percent correct when councillor Craddock came to us. And stated that what we were doing as a council wasn't in line with what Metro's goals were. And that Metro's, I mean, actually, uh, Mr. Eric Mueller can um. Speak to a little bit more of this as well, uh, but. When we had councillor Craddock come up and try to explain to us why uh what we were doing wasn't acceptable any longer. She just kept reiterating the same sentence, the same sentence. Well, it's, and I'm not going to try to remember verbatim what she stated, but basically, we weren't. A good enough representation of Troutdale to make that decision anymore in Metro's eyes. And we kept asking the question, well, how are we as elected? Councilors and mayor of this city not? Good representation of the community where this program sits. And she just kept saying, well, Metro's starting to leave more with basically DEI. You know, Metro's leaning with DEI, so we need to go and um. Reorganize this program and you can either join or not, and so we read it as. Metro doesn't necessarily see us as good representatives of our community and Metro sees themselves as a better representative of our community. So we couldn't find a way to move forward. It was difficult, it was the end of her. Career, I guess, um, for lack of a better term. So it almost, it, it felt like, and I have the deepest respect for councillor Craddock. It just felt like she was just kind of mailing it in. And so it was easy for her to sit back and just keep regurgitating the same sentence instead of trying to come to an agreement or come to an understanding where. We could try to see eye to eye on how Metro doesn't see us as being good representation of our community. So sorry for taking that from you councillor Glance, but. And then um, when we heard that uh Metro was going to partner with East County Rising. Um, and then open up the, the program to all the East County cities. Even though the way we read the code, it stated that the funds should be dispersed. Inside the community where the transfer station lies and not necessarily with the surrounding communities that feed into it or could feed into it. So there was confusion there and then really just the. Just the all, all around feeling of. And yes, councillor Simpson was sick and he wasn't here for the first go around, but when this decision was made, it wasn't made um. With the level of respect that we would have hoped to have had. From Metro saying, hey, we're thinking about changing the program as you see it. If you have any comments or concerns or if we can work at a way to kind of come to an agreement, great, let's do that. Instead, it was just decided upon. It was just decided and then we were just kind of held. Held in the background without any communication, so it kind of, it rubbed us the wrong way. It, it started off on a bad foot when, you know, a couple of years ago, when we just couldn't come to that agreement. Um, and so to have this happen after that, it just kind of continued that feeling, so. Did you have any other comments councillor Glance?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it's, the optics are bad, it may be a separate company on paper, but it's also the. The political arm of that is also someone who endorsed. Councillor. Simpson's campaign, so the optics on that just aren't good. If you'd have told me it went to, I don't know, some kind of. Other group that I thought was neutral, I would feel very differently about this. But the fact that you were involved in a decision that went to a group you are associated with. And a side group of that sponsored part and endorsed your campaign, that just doesn't sit well.
And so is there dollars exchanged between Metro and East County Rising, what's their? Non-political arm?
Projects.
Was there a contract?
There is a contract now, yes.
And monies were exchanged?
Administering the grant, so the staff time that they will spend to. Manage the committee to do the engagement to solicit grant applications. Um, they are getting compensated for that, yes.
What's the dollar amount on that contract?
I don't have the exact dollar amount here, I'd be happy to, to share more, we are compensating them for um. You know, a percentage of the staff time.
My understanding, like, I think it's like fifteen or twenty percent, it's, it's a straight, whatever the, the code is, Metro code.
The code speaks specifically to local governments and the amount of administrative.
Oh.
So only fifteen percent of the community enhancement fees, correct, will be used to support the administrative.
Fifteen to twenty percent?
Yeah.
Be. Thirty to thirty eight thousand dollars.
And that's annually or monthly?
Total.
Annually, yeah, okay, I just, just to.
Yeah, so as councillor Simpson shared. Because the funds haven't been distributed in two years, there is a backlog, there's a hundred and ninety thousand um in the bank.
Yeah.
That has been accrued, so all of that is not going to be awarded in the first year. For the first year, we're just starting with a hundred thousand, which is about the average amount that was awarded in the past. For our first year partnership, so we will kind of work through that backlog of, of money over the next couple of years.
So how come that decision was made? How come it wasn't made to continue with the way it was before? How come it was made to hold money back and then, like you said, accrue through it in the coming years?
Because the funds weren't being distributed, they were just being as accrued and not spent. So we, there were two years where there was no um active program. So there was no mechanism to spend the funds. So now that we have our first year where we're going to be spending the funds, we felt that it would be wiser rather than just say, let's spend all the money that we have in the bank. To kind of, you know. Spread it out a little bit more over, over a few years, so it wasn't. We find that sometimes when a community is used to receiving, oh, this grant program is around ninety thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year. To have one year where it goes up. To a hundred and ninety and then have it go back the next year. So it was just a programmatic decision from those of us with a lot of experience in grant making. Um, but we did have that backlog because as you, um, as we've discussed in twenty twenty one. The council made the decision to not sign that IGA, so the money's been accruing.
And then when, how did the decision come about to open it up to the other cities in East County?
Yeah, so the Metro code does not require that the funds are distributed in the host city. The language is um, community surrounding the facility. So as you can see on the slide that councillor Simpson shared, the Troutdale Waste Management Facility is very much. Near the intersection of those three communities, so when we think of community surrounding the facility. Um, those three are all impacted and then. Excuse me, we did community engagement for several months as we were identifying. Um, a community-based partner who could work with us, talk to a lot of stakeholders. And there was strong support for really seeing um more of a surround of the waste management facility uh to benefit from the grant. So the city of Troutdale will continue to benefit and also residents in Wood Village and Fairview as well.
Who were those stakeholders and how come we weren't?
We have any communication um with your staff regularly over the last couple of years. Um, inviting folks to help us identify community-based organizations. I don't have that full list of organizations that I spoke to in front of me. Um, but yeah, we worked for a number of months getting to know folks in the community and trying to identify organizations. Whose mission would align with administering a grant program. There's a number of amazing nonprofit organizations, as you know, doing work with the community. However, not all of them are really in a position to want to manage a grant program. Many are involved directly in social services or environmental restoration, they're more the folks that would apply for the grants. And so we really wanted to look for an organization where um the activities of awarding grants um was aligned with their mission, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, a year and a half ago, Metro sent me an email saying, do we have any suggestions on who might? Administer the programs for nonprofit and that was the last communication I really had regarding the topic.
I'd like to share more history about the email communication if that's helpful.
Uh, councillor White?
Hello councillor Simpson, I'm sorry you were sick for your own party at Ishfield. I plan to go to, to meet you there.
Thank you.
Um, I've got two, two issues and I think I'll, I'll just continue on with the Metro ones since it's been brought up and um. Yeah, it was the main reason, the concern Troutdale had, um, staff noticed that. Uh, Metro is no longer going to assume liability for their, their, this program. And that was a concern to us being a small city, you know, if. If there was a lawsuit or someone got hurt, um, falling art or whatever it might be, that. That'd be a, that could be a lot for a small city our size to handle. And I know staff was in correspondence because I brought it up several times under council concerns because. I kind of had the feeling something was going on and uh. And we never got a solid answer back from you guys, so. I, I think it, I think it was very unethical the way it was handled and I, I think it. Um, using East County Rising, you know, it's like funneling money to supporters. So I, I would get that changed as, as soon as possible if I were you. And um, I also think it needs to come back to Troutdale, I think at this point we would take it over ourselves completely like. Other cities do and other cities. I thi- I believe Oregon Cities handles their, their own, um, they have a transfer station there. Because we're the ones that put up with, you know, the vectors and the truck traffic and the smell. And the noise of having a, a transfer station. And the others, now we're going to share, share that, are we going to share the burden as well? Are each of those cities going to get a portion of the garbage that gets delivered to that transfer station? You guys understand that, how, how long that was? And to leave us out and Troutdale, Troutdale's a strong city, you know, we, we won an award at League of Oregon Cities for Home Rule. And we know what our rights are, we have an excellent attorney. I, I would suggest you guys take a second look at, at this program before, before this gets out of hand. And you're our representative, Mr. Simpson. We're, we're probably the bigger population of, of your district. So to not even come to us and ask us, I think is a, is not starting off right, so.
And I'm happy to share records of communication, um, if that's helpful. Our perspective is that um communities surrounding a facility are impacted by that facility in a number of ways. Including transportation, um, trucks and things like that. So it's uh our perspective, the, the communities surrounding all do have an impact, not only the actual city that hosts it. My understanding, I wasn't um on staff at the program at that time in twenty twenty one when the council declined to sign the IGA. So I can't speak um directly to that, my understanding is um. The twenty twenty one IGA came out and local governments and nonprofits who were administering the grant had the opportunity to. To sign that or not, I'm sorry, I can't speak more directly to those conversations that happened in twenty twenty one. I'll also say that the, um, there are nine community enhancement grant programs throughout the region and um. Some of them are administered by local governments, others are administered by nonprofit organizations or Metro. So there is a mix of how these grant programs are administered throughout the region.
Is there, and sorry, is there other? Uh, community enhancement programs that? Divvy up the money to other neighboring communities other than the community that the transfer station resides in?
Well, when they're within the city of Portland, they just have a section of Portland, so in that sense, they need to create like the City of Roses. Transfer Station, for example, has a boundary that includes a portion of Portland. Where the city has, is administering the grants, in the five cases where the cities are administering the grants. Those cities have chosen to make the boundary their city boundary. Um, again, that is their interpretation of communities surrounding the facility. Um, if you look at a map similar to the Troutdale Waste Management Station, there are other. Adjacent communities that are, as we, our perspective is, are also impacted by the facility and currently do not receive funds. So again, it kind of depends, each program creates their own boundary.
So is that a, a yes or a no? Is there other programs that?
Not all programs are exactly a city boundary, if that's the answer to your question.
Well, I've, what I'm looking for is, yes, some programs. Divvy up money to other communities. Aside from the community that the transfer station resides in or no. Troutdale's transportation, transfer station will be the only transportation or community enhancement program that will divvy up monies to the surrounding.
At this, sorry, I misunderstood, at this point Troutdale Waste Management Funds will go to three cities and that is unique for, to go to three separate cities. When a facility is in a state like the city of Portland, then. A unique boundary is created, so, sorry.
I got you, thank you, I appreciate that. And then is there, out of the other nonprofit organizations that are administering the program? Are there any other uh nonprofits that have a political action arm?
Another nonprofit that we're working with, no, the answer to your question is no, another nonprofit we're working with is Elevate Oregon. They're a youth development organization in the Park Rose neighborhood and they are partnering with us to administer the City of Roses.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate your comments about the optics of. East County Rising and East County Rising Community Projects. Um, we did consider that and feel that our work with East County Rising Community Project. Um, can be separate from the activities of East County Rising.
We don't share that sentiment. Just to be upfront and, and hon- and honest, councillor One, I interrupted you earlier and then I'll get councillor Glance.
Uh, you much asked the same question that I was gonna ask.
Oh, okay.
And I will just kind of. Just kind of say the same thing that. I wasn't here back in twenty twenty one, this is, I'm new, I was uh, I was just newly elected and sworn in in uh. January of this year, so we can share that. Fun, uh, so I'm learning, learning a lot um on the go, um, but I will, I will say that. Just the optics are not great and I think we're talking about an amount of money that's not. Going to make or break probably a city's budget or somebody's art or. Manhole covers or whatever that money is directed to, but I think that. Just the optics and what that kind of generosity represents to a city and that partnership is. Almost more important than the amount of money that's there, right, so. Again, the, the optics aren't great. I don't really understand that you have this backlog of money. Because you haven't administered a program for a couple of years and then just to say like. Well, we're not going to do that, we're just going to hold on to that money. Um, and then we're just going to now, from this point forward, now divvy it up every year. Seems like you have a pot of money that is, I'm assuming, sitting there making money. That you feel like you can either hold over, it just seems like that it, you are. In charge of this money and, and giving it away. And I would see that, hey, we have a backlog of a couple of years because of COVID, everybody understands that, but. Let's take that money and let's, let's catch up, so let's divvy it up to a, let's do a couple of things now. To get us back on track and then going forward, we're going to give, you know, do a once a year deal.
Yeah.
Seems like a reasonable, reasonable uh request from our community, our communities. But I, I really strongly urge to reconsider just the optics of it. And how we can uh move forward on re-establishing a positive relationship. You know, looking forward, so. Absolutely, no, I would say um optics, sure, optics are everything in this country right about now. Um, I will go back and talk to our Metro attorneys. Uh, to see where we are legally standing with all of this. Um, I think that Carrie McLean will um undoubtedly go and turn every rock and make sure everything is correct. Now, when it comes to communication. I think that we at Metro could do a lot better when it comes to that. And I'll, you know, I'll take the heat, I'm, I've absorbed things like you. That I didn't have a say over, but I just kind of walked into it, so I'll own it, I'll stand on that, that house, but I will also say that. If you want to talk to me and you have a concern, you can reach out to me, you can call me. Brady has my number, so it doesn't air loud. Um, and I'm more than willing to go on a walk, get a cup of coffee, have lunch. Um, so that when we get to this place, we can keep it above board and talk about business.
Absolutely, hundred percent, and I, and I'll state that that communication road goes two ways, you know, it's on us too to reach out and communicate as well. It's not just on Metro.
Oh, I mean, you know, we've connected on a number of occasions already, Mary.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, councillor Glance?
Yes, I just had a point of clarification. Earlier, I heard that there were three cities that are uh basically impacted by. The waste station, but then I also heard earlier. That it was not just those three cities, it was also surrounding areas, meaning. Gresham and some of East Side, uh, unincorporated, is it unincorporated still or Portland? Is it just the three cities that the funding is targeting? Or is it a broader region?
So there are nine facilities in the region that collected a community enhancement fee. So there are nine separate programs. So there's that. And then the fees from Troutdale Waste Management Station will go to support the cities of Troutdale, Fairview and Wood Village. Again, the committee will approve or amend that geography at their first meeting. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, was where the Troutdale station money went.
Mr. Trumpke.
Just from a legal standpoint, I think it's inappropriate for you to say what a board will or will not do at its first meeting. They will consider it might be a better way to say that. Although it does seem to be a foregone conclusion. No. She looked away, so I happened to look at you.
Our lawyer, Mr. Ed Trumpke. Counselor What?
Yeah, part, you being new, I don't think you understand how, how loved that program was by our community. We have a big art community. We have world-class artists that live in our community. We also have a very strong historic society that was doing really good projects throughout the city. I think the other cities were probably jealous of us, but we're like, yeah, we'll trade you the transfer station for the fund any day of the week. But so what's the next step? Are you guys just going to continue down this road? Or are you gonna, are we gonna bring it back to where it was? You know, Troutdale managed, along with, you know, Charlie was always on our committee as well.
Well, I, well, first of all, I mean, I think that, you know, the ball is moving, but also there was the IGA that, you know, wasn't signed. So I don't know if you can administer without going into an IGA with Metro. That's one. Two, I would love to see some of these projects that you all were talking about that have gone in. I mean, to hear the passion that you're coming here with, talk about it and to talk. I want to see what has been spent out, you know, with this $440,000 that y'all have been spending in this space. What it's gone to so that we can say, hey, how can we continue to support this community as it wants to grow and shape itself the way it wants to? I mean, I'm a huge supporter. I don't know where y'all are on the Halsey, Main Street Halsey project, but I'm a huge supporter of that. I want to see people come into this community and see the beauty and see the vibrancy that exists in this space. But you also have to show it to me too, so that I can go out and understand why you have been so passionate about this.
Yeah, that's something we can do. We can do a walk and talk. And we can go through and show all kinds of things, all kinds of past projects that we've had done in the city. A lot of them are downtown. There's some spreading throughout the whole entire city. So that's something we can do. We can get a list of everything and then do a.
And we also have that listed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
At the bare minimum, I believe that money that was approved during COVID because we weren't able to meet, belongs in Troutdale. Bare minimum.
Well, the record, the point that you made, Counselor, about maybe not holding that all in the backlog and thinking about how to spend that, I think that's definitely worth considering. Again, the funds did not get backlogged because of COVID. The funds began getting backlogged when the city of Troutdale declined to sign the IGA and no longer was administering the program. So because there was no mechanism for administering the grants, that's why there was the backlog. You are right, it did coincide through COVID. But now we're in positions to start getting those funds back into the community. So we'll definitely consider, you know, if there's reasons not to award more of those funds. And as the counselor said, we'll continue to connect with our legal team and make sure that we feel confident about our partnership with East County Rising Community Project. We have been in communication with our legal team as we've been developing this partnership and establishing the contract. But based on the concerns you raised, we'll certainly go back and, as the counselor said, ask them to.
Then the other comment I wanted to make had to do with the National Scenic Gorge area. Because we call ourselves the gateway to the gorge. That area is technically not in Troutdale, but it's, I mean, we can see it from across the river. And it's just concerning to me that the solution now is just to have, have someone going in to pick up illegal dumping and garbage, and that's the solution. And you made the comment that for the people that live there, well, that's an illegal camping situation with illegal dumping. And that's just the tip of the iceberg for the problems that are going on out there. So I would hope that Metro would take a serious look at what's happening out there and come up with a real solution because it's inhumane. In the wintertime, that's one of the worst places you could be is in the gorge. And we get hurricane-force winds that don't let up for 10 days straight. We have flooding out there. So it's gotta, it's gotta be better than what it is. And that, just picking up the garbage is, to me, just, it's just saying, yeah, it's okay to be here. You know, and that's where a lot of people are sent. And I know that for a fact.
Oh, I hear you loud and clear, Counselor White. I'm right here, right next to you in there. There's camps and tents and everything in my neighborhood. And I'll tell you, we're working with our partners. But you have to understand too as well, I'm frustrated, like you're frustrated at what we're seeing. My son hasn't grew up and witnessed all of this. But also, this is a system that hasn't been built out. We see that campsites and small pods and things are being built out. But the long-term solutions, it takes time. And part of that was what I talked about with affordable housing. But also, I think that there's, that's when we come in with our county partners because we know there's behavioral health, there's drug addiction. There's things that go along with all of this that's layered on top of this that we have not systematically addressed for decades. And right now, we are what, three years into affordable housing services? And we did just do a corrective action plan with the joint office and county just last week for the underspending of the support of housing dollars. And so that plan is in place. We're moving forward. We have faith and confidence that hopefully the county, along with the joint office, can get those folks out of the gorge. Because I agree with you, that's inhumane to have folks living outside. I'm particularly not prepared for that type of weather. And, you know, we all gonna go home tonight and lay in our warm homes or lay on our pillows. Those folks are supposed to be out there. Even right now, they're out there. That's not something that's lost on us. So I appreciate your comments, Counselor White.
I'm curious how the regional illegal dump, dumping patrol, are they armed when they go out there?
No, they are not.
Yeah, no, no, no.
How are they able, because we're told by our sheriff that it's not safe to go out there.
I will say that the regional illegal dumping program, so as Counselor Simpson said, we have six crews that go out. They have relationships with local enforcement agencies. They have recent, after COVID, they were very, as we saw, there was a lot of increase in illegal dumping. So we can check to see if they have changed their model. I do know they have relationships and access to connecting with law enforcement in those situations where they feel that maybe needed for safety.
Mr. Ray Young.
If I could add, I've been out there when they've done the garbage pickup before. And it's a fairly large group, a lot of people. And usually, the HOPE team is there. And sometimes law enforcement from the Forest Service, who's supposed to cover that area, but they're too busy in the gorge, are out there also. So they do, in the past, when I've seen it, they've done a pretty good job framing a large group of people. They're doing it and support from the other law enforcement agencies that cover that area. So they have been doing it.
But Metro staff is not.
I'll say, this is before your time, obviously, and before apparently your time as well. President Peterson came to, well, she was on Zoom because we were, it was the whole new world of COVID council meetings. And she came and stated that in 10 years, she will have ended homelessness in the metro region. So you got eight years left. You got seven. You got seven years left to make good on her promise that she came and told all of us and the millions that are watching at home. And I told her that I would try to be here to hold her accountable to that. So I'm really hoping that there's plans. Because the needle's not moving now. It ain't moving at all. If anything, it's moving backwards. And so we have a real problem out here in East County. One that I deal with on a constant daily basis as a, as a public works employee out in the streets, on the west end of East County in Fairview. And so whatever we need to do moving forward, to get people up off the streets, to get them connected to services, whatever we need to do as a city to help along with that, let's start tackling that together instead of separate.
I think part of that, you know, there is, you know, we spoke to providers today, just today, who want to come in, who've had some experience in other places, at least reducing it, because it is everywhere. You know, I travel often back to the south. I mean, it's back home in Houston, it's back home in Groh. I mean, it's there. But what we're hearing is like, it's almost on a case-by-case basis. And we're lacking outreach workers who can keep people, get people recruited or retained. Same for healthcare providers, behavioral health specialists. So I think, you know, as we have this conversation, as we continue to walk and talk together, finding creative ways to get folks who we know need work pipelined into those areas or into those certifications that we need to bolster as we move forward. Because right now, we're pretty much, we're on hold until we can get enough people to
Right.
really understand and go out and tackle. And I think, I think the biggest piece that I've heard today from those outreach workers is boots on the ground. Like you said, folks don't feel too safe going out. And I think we need to, as a society, get as many folks as we can back to this side of humanity. Because, you know, you may lose a little bit of your humanity when you're out there. And provide peer support specialists who can go out, who are, who know the streets, who have the experience, have lived experience to go out and do that outreach work. We also need to be able to pay them so that they don't end up back out there.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
I think you're exactly right. It's a complex problem with so many factors that require so many people. The thing I read never leads to like one solution. I think that some of what we're talking about is creating these relationships and being able to carry that towards where there's goodwill between two different entities to help kind of solve these problems together, right? We all need help from each other. There's not one solution, otherwise we would have already. We would have already done it. And I'm in healthcare and, I mean, I realize there's these people and I don't, I don't have any, any super good, great ideas of how to accomplish all these things. But you're right, like trying to, you have to pay people to want to do a job. You have to attract them basically with pay so I can have a place to live. You know, so I'm not part of, now I'm not part of the problem. So, but I, I say we're here. I'm here to like help as much as I can with my knowledge and what we can do to, you know, help forge a relationship together moving forward. So I appreciate you coming by.
Appreciate that, Counselor.
Counselor Glance.
Yep, I just wanted to actually thank you for coming here. And I don't mean to like pick on you or anything. I'm sure you're a great person. I just, I had a long list there. And I also wanted to put in a quick plug on the Metro Strategic Planning Session. I did that last week and it was great. Thank you for inviting us.
And I'll tell you this, I'm working now to have a better strategy to reach out to folks. I think right now, we, you know, that, for me, is the issue and the key for me around getting out notice to you all. I think right now, it's like, sign up on my newsletter and I send things out, right? I would like to, you know, on those ad hoc things, be able to be like, hey, let's get with this council, let's get everybody rounded up so that we can get notice out about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, for sure. If there's Noah, Mr. Ray Young.
Just the advantage I have over Nicole is that I get an opportunity, Noel, I get an opportunity to look at my emails while she has to talk and face all of you. About 14 months ago, she did reach out to us and say, got any suggestions for a nonprofit who might be able to administer it? And we discussed the idea that 20% is the max that anybody can get out of the fund. It would be hard because as we learned from doing it, it takes more than the 20% you get to go through that whole process. And so, you know, we were struggling to find, I think at the time, an organization out here to do it. And then back in November, six months ago, we got some email exchanges where you and I were on it, Mayor, getting an accounting for how much money was sitting in the accounts.
Right, yeah, I do remember those, yeah.
So that's been our email traffic over the last year and a half.
Counselor Craddock has done some communications as well. Counselor Craddock has sent some communications.
Oh, yeah, in that, during that, that accounting, that was in there too, yeah.
Counselor Ripman.
Yes, I also want to thank Counselor Simpson for coming. And sorry if we, if you ran into a buzzsaw, but I, I served 11 years on impact. And it's hard to get Metro to listen to us. And we appreciate when a counselor comes and listens. And I can tell you, listen, I wondered if you would just do a, first of all, I pretty much have to admit, I agree with my fellow counselors on the issue of the community enhancement grant changes. And, but I won't say anything more about that. Could you share with us the slide presentation you made tonight? Please send it to Ray, send it to the city or send it to the council. You also, I would like to have the IGA you have with East County Rising, a copy. I'm sure it's, but these are public documents. You know where they are. Metro is pretty complicated. If you could just share that with us, I would appreciate that document. You also mentioned there are nine grants around the metro area. And I, I would either like those documents or links to those documents. I'd like to just be able to review them.
And are you saying the contracts?
Yes, aren't they public?
Make sure I was clear what you were asking.
Yes, I wanted the actual grants unless they're in an IGA and there is no contract, just an IGA, share that. Whatever's the relevant operative legal document.
I know, easier, excuse me, Counselor, for Noel in that online, I think almost everyone will have webpages.
Have you, Ray, I'm inviting them to share with us. It'll be easier for me.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
The history of the grants, that's something you need to get from each program. So what I, just to make sure, I heard so that I can follow up, you are interested in seeing the contracts that we have with our local governments and nonprofit partners who are administering these grants?
Yes. Great, thank you. Just a comment that, you know, I don't know if you know where our transfer station is, but all traffic to and from that transfer station goes through Troutdale, does not go through Wood Village, does not go through Fairview. They might be impacted by some sort of aromas. I don't know, but it's on a hillside out in the industrial area. I, I think you're misinformed if you think those other cities are impacted by that transfer station, that they aren't. Which is partly why we have a chip on our shoulder about it. But anyway, I, once again, thank you, Counselor Simpson. I know this was tough, but, and I really appreciate your listening. I could tell you we're listening. You're both listening and thanks.
If there's nothing else, I am going to open up public comment just for a quick second and see if anybody from the, like I said earlier, millions of people we have at home that are watching, if they would like to make a comment, now would be the time. Public comments now open. If you would like to make a comment or address Metro or Counselor Simpson, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record on Zoom. Okay, nobody there? Anybody in council chambers? Nobody in council chambers. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the comment. So I'll just say, you know, you and I, the last time we sat and talked with the mayors and stuff, I just stated that, you know, I'm, I've said it a couple of times. Counselor Craddock had big shoes to fill and I think you're doing a good job. She did a really good job. We didn't agree on hardly anything, but she did a great job of coming and informing the city, especially of things like, hey, there's this grant program that's open. There's all these opportunities for, like what you stated earlier, there's $20 million of grant opportunity out there, you know? We didn't, we didn't present an application. She was really great about coming and reinforcing Troutdale of, there's this window. If you would like something, all you gotta, not all you have to do is ask, but it's always no if you don't ask. She was great. If you would like something, all you gotta, not all you have to do is ask, but it's always no if you don't ask. She was great at that. Just, I want to leave you with, you were elected to represent East County on Metro, not the other way around. You weren't elected by Metro to push their agenda out here on East County. You were elected to take East County's essence, what makes us a community and try to drive Metro's messaging and agenda through that lens. And I'm just hoping that you will take that to heart through all of the decisions that you make and all the votes that you cast. Uh, moving forward that you're a representative of everybody out here, not just a representative of Metro too out here. So I hope, I hope, uh, you have a successful, um, uh, uh, career and I hope that we can sharpen this relationship between Metro and Troutdale. Um, cause it was kind of dull for a long time. Um, even though, like I said, Shirley was a great, uh, great representative, um, there's always room for improvement. There's room for us to improve just as, just as much. Uh, so whatever we can do to sharpen that partnership, I'm on board. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number six of resolution supporting utility service reliability through essential and necessary utility user rate increases. Mr. Mueller, after you get your refreshing glass of Troutdale water, provided to you by our stellar public works department. That's right. That is clean and free of disease and pathogen. Oh.
It's, uh, it's provided exactly by this wonderful utility services that I'm, uh, I'm here to talk to you about.
The floor is yours. You have the con.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, this is, uh, I, I, I understand there was a little bit of chuckling, uh, over the, uh, the way I phrased the resolution. Uh, but I had guessed had been intentional in trying to frame it from the standpoint of, uh, it's not city staff's goal simply to raise fees on the residents. But what the real purpose of the fees are is to provide reliable utility services. That's really our point and purpose. It's not simply to collect money. And, uh, as you all know, the city operated water sewer and stormwater utilities, you know, provide essential services that make a difference in the health, well-being and livability of, uh, you and your neighbors. These utility services are funded by the user fees. Uh, the money doesn't grow on trees. It doesn't fall from the sky. It, uh, it's provided by those that make use of the services. And, uh, as I mentioned in the staff report, the, uh, city utility services are not built to make a profit. Uh, they're built to recover the costs of providing those services. The goal is to provide reliable, dependable, safe, as the mayor mentioned, clean water, uh, to take care of the, uh, stormwater a- as well as the sanitary sewer disposal in a safe and efficient manner. That's our goal and purpose. Uh, as we covered, uh, a bit more during the budget committee meetings, you know, the cost to operate the services have continued to rise over the past two years when there has been no rate increase. And, uh, given that the utilities are enterprise funds under the GASB as well as the local budget law, the expectation is, is that they're to recover their costs. Uh, those costs are, uh, have continued to rise during this two-year period with, uh, without any rate increase. As we covered briefly with the, the budget committee, uh, we have proposed the increase, uh, outlined it, uh, in the staff report. Uh, for the quote typical household, which, you know, there may not be exactly one that's typical, but for the typical household, it's, uh, about eight dollars a month is what the increase is looking to be over the, uh, uh, beginning in the July timeframe that's being proposed. Uh, as also as our public works director, uh, Travis Holton has had outlined back in February, the, uh, rate review and SDC review that's underway with FCS, uh, that, that report will be coming, uh, in the fall to the council. Uh, this is a, what we refer to as a stopgap increase. Uh, my, my fear is, is that without addressing it now, we're looking at a 15 to 20% uh, rate increase as a result of, uh, that analysis, uh, again, having, not having done any increases for the last two years. Again, this is, uh, I framed it in a manner that I feel as though, yes, you're gonna, it's politically unpopular to vote to increase your constituents and your neighbors', uh, utility rates is, uh, as well as, as explaining to your spouse when you get home, why you voted to increase your own costs. Uh, but, uh, again, the utilities are funded by, uh, the rates, uh, and failing to do so, you know, is going to deprive the services of the necessary resources, you know? Cut corners, defer maintenance, et cetera. Things will, uh, begin to degrade, which undermines reliability. Which again is why I frame the, the resolution in such a way that I believe you can reasonably explain it to somebody standing in the line at Safeway when they asked you why you voted to increase their costs. It wasn't that you voted to increase their rates. It was that you voted to try and make sure that those services that are delivered to their house are reliable. In any case, I, as I mentioned, I know it's, uh, not politically popular, but I believe it's a very reasonable, fiscally prudent and a defendable position for, uh, for you to take. Um, and I guess I feel, feel it also, uh, helps, uh, prevent what I believe would be a significant political backlash that you're going to get if you're faced with voting for a 15 or 20% increase, uh, in 2024 as a result of, uh, if you chose not to do something at this point. So in any case, I'm, uh, happy to address any questions that the council may have.
All right. Any questions from council? Uh, Council Ripma.
Would you mind if we just simplified the title of the resolution? I'm not against the resolution. I, I just, uh, I would just say a resolution authorizing an interim utility rate, uh, authorizing interim utility rate increases. I can explain it at Safeway if someone asks, but but I, I, I really, I, I have to admit a title that makes it sound like, uh, a congressional enactment or something, uh, doesn't kind of rub me the wrong way. I don't know if the rest of the council shares that view. Other than that, I, I, I think, I think it is prudent of us to authorize this increase now because there's going to be a, uh, five-year rate analysis, which I mean, that's when we do it. It'll come out in the fall. There's going to be a, a rate increase next year. And if we don't do this, that one will be bigger. So I, I only ask about the title. Eric, did you have a comment or do you care?
I, I, I'm happy to support whatever the council feels comfortable with as a title. I, again, was trying to provide something positive to vote for rather than something negative to vote for.
Um, Council Glance.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever negative to vote for something that, you know, make sure that people have clean water. I think that's a positive right there. I do have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned that the rate increase could be 15 to 20%. Based on what? How, where does that guess come from?
Uh, that's based on my analysis of where we are and where we're going to be. We're already from a CPI standpoint at almost 12% uh, through, uh, April, uh, of, uh, this year since the last rate increase. Um, and so by the time we would get to this fall, even if inflation does moderate somewhat, which is sort of the hot debate among economists right now, uh, we're still going to be in an elevated level, uh, as well as we're going to continue to have to, uh, put, uh, put away money to continue to fund the replacement of the degrading, uh, capital assets. Uh, those two things combined, I think we would be facing in excess of 15% and possibly up to 20%. It will depend on somewhat on FCS's analysis of sort of the, uh, where we are as it relates to funding the capital replacement. You know, because we've got pipes out, uh, in the system that are 60, 70 years old, you know, they don't last forever. Thankfully they last more than 10 years, but they do require replacement. Um, so that's, it's based on my estimate.
And have we gone two years without a rate increase before? Is that abnormal? Do we typically have rate increases every year?
Well, uh, regrettably, a, a number of years ago, the council, uh, chose to, uh, take the politically popular choice, uh, several years in a row and went, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was eight or nine years without a rating increase, which put us really behind the eight ball, which is one of the reasons why we had to go through such the kind of the regimented increases that we went through the past, uh, uh, rate increase cycle. And so this is, uh, also, uh, an approach to try and avoid falling back into that hole again. Um, so, uh, that, I would say that there, the council has not been typical over any long stretch because council personalities change.
Uh, and then my last comment is on the resolution. I have an issue with item seven. I don't feel that belongs in a resolution. And I would argue that it's opinion. I would think that, you know, supporting, keeping clean, running water and those facilities working is a positive, not a negative. Yeah, other than item seven, I was fine with the rest of it.
Yeah, at some point I would suggest somebody, Mayor, should make a motion either with a new title and/or, uh, to delete number seven.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean.
Whatever you know is, yeah, or at least that first part of number seven, whatever Council Glance is intending.
Yeah, and part of it also made it sound like we would choose politics over what's right for the city and that rubbed me the wrong way. I would hope that any of us, and I believe any of us would choose what's right for the city over what's politically popular.
I see your point. So, um, Sarah, did you happen to write down what Dave suggested?
I wrote something down and I was going to confirm that I have that correct.
Ed, Ed had it. Ed, if you wouldn't mind reciting for the record, Council President Ripma's revised title.
His revised title was, uh, a resolution authorizing interim utility rate increases.
Yes.
And then you also suggesting, Ed, that for Council Glance's concern, just the first six words of number seven be deleted and, uh.
Start with the word avoiding. So it just reads avoiding necessary user rate increases, which results in underfunding, threatening service reliability and potentially public health and safety is not in the best interests of the community.
I'm good with that. So as long as we have that written down, um, we're still going to go open up public comment. We're still going to continue with discussion, but, um, as long as that's captured, then we can move forward at least with this. Uh, Council White.
Oh, yeah. Um, to me the increases, um, we used to do it just by comparing what other cities' rates were. And now we're doing it based on inflation. And it's like, I asked for a simple request to get me on board. It was just, I wanted to see the history of the increases, how much they were and when we did it. And I couldn't even get that. And it's like, it's a, you know, water's not like an essential thing. It's also pretty much a monopoly through the city. And, um, you know, I know a little bit about plumbing too, quite a bit about plumbing. You know, the modern materials are, are quite good. They last incredible amount of time, but, you know, it just, it concerns me that we're doing a stopgap. You know, we're going to have the study in the fall. And then we'll have a more accurate number. And it was brought up, I know, I think by Gene Benz. Um, he realized it was a council decision to increase water, but he thought that, that was too high of an increase. You know, I, I do get approached by people, um, and they're, they're really noticing the bill, you know? The, the monthly increase is what the full bill used to be. If you've lived in Troutdale long enough. And, uh, I know other cities that, um, look 20 years without an increase and, um, that's what I keep in mind. If something catastrophic happened, like if we lost the water tower or, um, there would be, we have a grant writer on staff. There would be federal money available to help with the, with a real emergency. And I know also the consultants look at what would it cost, the worst case scenario? And that's how they arrive at our rate. So I decided to throw that out. And I agree with, um, Sandy's comments on seven. There was a lot of similar comments in budget that I didn't care for, but there's so much to cover in budget that we just let it go. But, um, I think, um, the staff's got to be careful not to come across, you know, from a political standpoint or try to read our minds.
Okay. Uh, Council One.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, I'm laughing because this is, if, let's just say we do this rate increase, which is, if there's extra money, what happens to that extra money? Like for instance, we, it rerate increase and then it, it overshoots. We overshoot for some reason. Is it, if extra money is coming in that we don't need to spend on the system or whatever, is there, what happens to that?
Yeah, presumably costs are going to continue to rise. So if we happen to increase the rates, then that beyond what we would need to in a particular year, I'm sure that all that would mean is that we would have less of an increase the following year. As with any expenditure, you know, we budget every year for expenses that many times projects, circumstances, et cetera, don't allow us to accomplish. That money remains in the fund and becomes available that as a carryover balance for that project in a subsequent budget year. So it doesn't get redirected. It doesn't go into the general fund to get used for other purposes. It remains for the rate payer's, uh, benefit. Um, and so it would, it would simply remain in the fund and be used for an expenditure in a subsequent period.
I will add to his answer in that, um, every year in the budget, you will see the, uh, water fund and you could see on there what it changes status from year to year. And I can go back, you know, decade if you'd like, just to see where that water fund goes up or down. Uh, so you'll see, oh, wow, we're collecting tons of money and it sits in there. Could be one view of it, but then what you don't realize is, is that sometimes certain repairs and maintenance only happen once every five or 10 years. And in one year, boom, it may suck everything out of that fund. And that's why we have the study because it has to figure out what short-term rate should be for like right now. But it also takes into what are long-term expenses going to be that may not be reflected in three or four budget years. Um, that's why we employ a, a very well-respected, uh, company that, that's what they do is they analyze all these things and try to figure out what they are and to bounce out to the last concerns. Um, as, as part of the report, we'll come back in the fall. We'll be happy to throw in some comparisons to other cities in the region and what they've done with increases over the years. Um, I, I'm not aware of any that have gone that long without the increase, but you know, we'll definitely argue some comparisons. But comparisons are also difficult because it's almost like apples to oranges because even though we're providing water, it's potable. Um, their infrastructures are different from city to city. Um, and, uh, what their needs are, uh, to deliver that water may vary from city to city. Um, City Portland, you know, their rates are high because they're building a $1 billion filtration plant, you know, near Barlow High School. Um, that we don't have to do. And so that's one of the reasons why our rates may be low City Portland. So it, it, that, it's very complicated and it can't be a snapshot of that year to year. Um, and that's why we're going to bring a report back in the fall from a company that's done before.
My main point, I kind of, I, I want to say I grasp the whole, I always want something that I could say. So if somebody does come up to me like, well, what if we have extra money? What do we do? I want to be able to have a, a reasonable explanation for them. And then I kind of assume if, you know, if we do nothing right now, we're basically waiting for that report to come. And then is it around this time next year, we would have? What I'm hearing you saying is like, if we do an eight and a half percent increase now, sounds like around this time next year, whenever that report, whenever we have to make another rate increase, we're going to need to do that almost that eight or nine percent increase again next year. And so what you're saying, if I hear you correctly, is it kind of lessens the blow next year by doing, by doing it in two increases?
That's, that's the intent to, intent of proposing it now is to avoid a, a much more dramatic increase that would be necessary.
And is there any? So if we were to do nothing, and we do nothing next year, we get all these things, is there money? Is there money that's in the budget that we would just have to throw it, throw it, water to basically? I'm using money as like a, something in the budget, a Band-Aid to put on because we don't have enough money coming in. Is there money that's in the budget somewhere? That we put towards water so we can keep it going and other areas?
We are, we are fortunate to be prudent in, from a fiscal standpoint, to have sufficient funds. You know, we've had sufficient funds to go without a rate increase for the last two years. Would we run out of water before the end of the coming fiscal year if we don't do the rate increase? No. Would we have projects that we might need to defer? Is there some deferred maintenance that might occur? Are there some projects that we need to wait on? Possibly, likely? Is it likely to be catastrophic between now and next year? No. Are we going to get into a deeper hole and be further behind? Absolutely.
Then rather quick, like, if we, what's the? I heard you say we get into a deeper hole, and I know the bigger, the. The more you dig the hole, the deeper you get, the more it's harder, the harder it is to get out. At what point? If you, do you have an idea of how many years without a rate increase we would be in such deep hole that we wouldn't be able to get out of it?
I I don't know how to answer that because, you know, you you can always raise the the rates, whether. Your neighbors come after you with a pitchfork or not is a different issue.
Counselor Glance.
Is there a kind of low income assistance? I thought there was.
There are two subsidy programs related, one to. Senior citizens and one to low income related to the sewer charge in particular.
And would that impact them as well?
Based on the, it's based on a, it's a discount on what the rate is, so the rate would go up, but the discount would also go up.
And then I have one odd question on page three of six down at the bottom, section four of the actual resolution. It talks about accounts that use recycled water from our sewer system. I didn't know that was. What did they use it for?
Drinking. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mueller.
We give a discount.
That that is a, that is a provision, I think one of the items that was addressed back five years ago, and some of this was, there was a. A potential energy production facility that was looking to go in next to our. Wastewater treatment plant that had a need for water, but the water didn't have to be potable. It did need to be processed, so that was. Trying to account for that. At the moment, I I am not aware that we have any users of that. That quality of water product.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Richard.
Sorry, I'm probably repeating yourself a little there, but. With the eight and a half percent increase, our ending fund balance could possibly be. Bigger or more than previous years, correct?
Well, the eight and a half percent is what's factored into the budget, and so in theory. Right, and so in theory, if everything in the budget, if all the expenses in the budget came in exactly. Then the ending fund balance would be what's in the budget, but of course, expenses are never exactly what's planned, because there's always variances. The sewer and the stormwater are more predictable because they're fixed rates, the water, we could do this. And we could have a cool rest of the summer, and so your need to water, your water consumption all could be lower, and so. Even with it, the balance could be lower. Or we could have the reverse, it could be scorching hot and we're running the wells flat out and, you know, it's. Oh, absolutely.
I had, if I could give a anecdote really quick, we have five wastewater pumps, stations in the city of Fairview. It's not normal, but one pump, each station has a dual pump system. One that's the primary, one that's the redundant backup, they both run, one runs probably seventy-five percent of the time, the other one runs twenty-five percent of the time. One of those pumps went down in one of our stations about seven months ago. It's about a ten thousand dollar pump. It's an expensive piece of equipment. Two weeks later, another station's pump went down. I have two wastewater pumps right now running without any backup. Without any redundancy, because catastrophically, at the same exact time. Two pumps that were within a few years of each other as far as life expectancy, but were creeping up on a ten year lifespan. Which is manageable, but still running on in something like a wastewater pump, happened to die at the same exact time. It's a twenty thousand dollar bill that we weren't necessarily ready for, but. We were able to. Were able to move forward with repairing it because of budgeting and. And planning and stuff like that, so still, it's a huge hit and it's a big hit that no one planned on, but if we don't. If we aren't good stewards of, yes, the city's money and yes, the taxpayers' dollars, but also of the infrastructure in our city. It would, I mean, it's, it's easy to think of drinking water, but it would be catastrophic if a sewer system went down as well, so. I'm dealing with a lot of that right now, next door.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and say, thanks for answering my question. I just wanted to have, I find it easier to ask a question, have an answer, and then say, like, I fully support. Your analysis of the rate increase, I think it's really important to take care of what we have. So we don't have a catastrophic event. And I just wanted to know if anybody does come, or my neighbors that I talk to, or my. Family that lives in the city of Troutdale, like, why, the exact reasons that we're doing it, and they're reasonable people, I think. These things aren't cheap and they're not cheap to fix. So if you do something right the first time, I think it's really important to take care of what you have, so I just wanted to say, I do support. Your findings and appreciate you answering my questions.
Brett, thank you.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, Mayor, I think what we also need to remember is our water department lives in the same. Economy that all of you live in personally. And it it's just like a little family over there, your water department, in that their expenses go up all the time because of gas, tires, parts. Labor, all that stuff goes up and. So they're the, we're the kind of the victims of the same economy you are, and if we don't, as we just talked about, keep up. Like you would ask for a raise from your boss or a union negotiates for a raise to keep up with inflation. Then we find ourselves farther and farther behind, and so we have to make sure that that water department does keep up with the costs that get thrown at it. Because it factors outside their control.
Counselor Glance.
Yep, assuming this passes, or should this pass? Can we put something in the champion that also lets people know how to apply for assistance if they're in? Please.
I'll answer for Ray and say yes.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, we've got a new champion getting started in the next couple of weeks and.
We just had Kelly send out an email asking for articles, so that might be a good article to put in there.
Make a note, send it to her right now, saying the article about our assistance programs for wastewater and water.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? Counselor White.
Yeah, another reason I asked for the, I wanted to know the history of rate increases. I'm just wondering if any other counselor thinks that would be valuable information, because maybe we could add it. Now on, because it'd be easy, add this one on and just keep a running tally, but. Actually, what I wanted is, because I believe this is the single highest increase we've ever had, is what we're asking for right now. I don't ever remember one over five percent.
Yeah, I'd love to see history too.
The history is certainly something we can have, I believe that was our expectation, was that we were going to be providing that this fall with the rate. Report from FCS, and so it certainly isn't something that we're. Attempting to hide by any means, I think Counselor White may be correct in terms of a percent. This, you know, you can look at it from the standpoint of this is two years of four and a quarter. Because we haven't raised rates for two years.
But prior to that, we had five years under Mayor Ryan. Five years of record rate increases. And we didn't, we gave people a break because of COVID. I just. If we're going to have, if we're going to be looking at a five to six to seven or eight. Percent increase every year, I want to see what that looks like, you know, what's our plan? A lot of people, you know, we're kind of a rural community, a lot of people are gardening and having chickens and. You know, taking care of their lawn, it's real expensive.
Yeah, more information is always better. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to open up public comment. Public comment is now open, agenda item number six, a resolution supporting utility service reliability through essential and necessary. Utility user rate increases, I just realized I read the wrong title. Well, technically, it's the right title.
It is the right title, no motion's been made to to change it.
Yet, yet. All right, floor is now open, anybody on Zoom wishes to comment, now's the time, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody, I'm going to go ahead, anybody in council chambers? You got to think about it, I'm going to close it. Public comment is closed. All right, if there's no other comments or questions for Mr. Mueller or staff. I would entertain a motion, Mr. Council President David Ripma.
Yes, I I move adoption of the resolution with the title as amended. Stated at the beginning of our discussion by Ed Trumpke and with number, finding number seven as amended. Stated, as stated by Mr. Trumpke.
A second.
All right, Sarah, roll call please.
Counselor McTrin.
Yes.
Counselor Glance.
Yes.
Counselor Ruma.
Yes.
And I'm muted. Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor Wen.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
And Counselor White.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mueller, I appreciate it. Don't everybody get excited, we have a new agenda item number seven. Which was previously consented agenda item three point three, a resolution endorsing the placement. Of the Sandy Riverfront Park and Trail and the Second Street Bridge on the regional transportation plan, Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution does not authorize the construction. Or set in stone that either project will be done, the resolution simply asks Metro to include on the regional transportation plan. Two of our local transportation plan items, the Sandy Waterfront Trail and the Second Street Bridge. The primary benefit of doing so is that these projects then become eligible for more. Grants down the road than if they are included on the regional transportation plan. It just gives it more credibility that at least they're in the planning documents. And as we've discussed before, it's important to note that placing an item on a transportation plan does not mean it's ever going to get built or done. One of the things that that many of you have learned and I've learned in government. That if you don't start early to create a possibility, you'll never get to do it. In ten or fifteen years, if the city says, hey, we we think we want to do that Second Street Bridge, let's do it. And then they'll say, well, what have you been doing for ten or fifteen years to get ready to ask to do it? And you can't do things quickly, so this is why we start things slowly, start things way ahead of time. And we put it on a transportation plan, which says, is that something that we may want to consider down the road? And so in this process, putting it on the regional metro plan allows us to be eligible to apply for other grants. It also allows us to get grants that can pursue grants that will allow us to look at the feasibility of something like the Second Street Bridge. Currently, we're looking at an ODOT grant, which we have a good chance of getting for about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I think. Which only goes for helping us refine the Second Street Bridge, which is, is it practical? Do the citizens want it? Is there a need for it? And that grant is supposed to cover for two years of study. So we are in this very early stages, particularly the Second Street Bridge one, of just investigating. Whether it is something that this community wants and is practical. And by putting it on this list, it makes it eligible for more grants down the road. Because, you know, the mantra is always going to be as much as we can, is we want other people to pay for our projects. It works out better that way, and so this is just one of those steps, and so that's why Metro has asked us to pass this resolution, so they'll officially have a request from the council. To put these two items on their regional transportation list, as I said earlier, they're already on ours.
Counselor Glance, I was waiting for your hand to go up.
I was going to say, I was the person that asked to have this pulled off the consent agenda. And I know back in, I think, late October, early November, we had a similar. Because consent, I can even speak, consent agenda topic that we took off consent agenda and spoke about. And I approved, and part of my reasoning at that time was, we spent just under twenty-three thousand dollars to get like. A hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funding, which I admit is good math. So what has since changed for me is. Think of his name, Nick, when Counselor Moon left, I was assigned to the East Multnomah County Transportation Committee. Where I discovered that, yes, these things are on the regional transportation plan. I've been following them on JPAC and other metro groups. And with Melissa leaving, we now have our grant writer. Participating in that, helping to fill in on planning. And I'm concerned that our efforts and staff time should be more addressed on URA. We have, if we're trying to do stuff for the long term, what about the URA and having a bridge there, or having the funding in our transportation? Transportation system to get that. Road through the outlet, I think these are much higher and much more needed. And I also noticed that the Gresham Fire Bond failed, so I know we're going to have some increased costs, so it's not like we can just absorb doing both. And my concern all along has been cost to have that pedestrian bridge be. Sustained from a major earthquake, that two fifty seventh route, that's literally what will save lives. In the event of a major earthquake, and if we have a bridge that tumbles down and we have to. Spend resources, that's literally going to cost people's lives, which is why I am so against this bridge. And then the last thing, I mean, we just talked about how the political ramifications of increasing. People's water rates, how do, how can you answer a voter in line that says, how can you approve? You know, this and then spend money on other projects, why not make things that are more needed instead of things that are wanted? So that was why I asked to have it pulled off. My rant's over.
Those are valid, that's a valid rant. Any other comments from Counsel Ripma?
Well, the thing is, and Sandy, I'm. I'm not that fond of the Second Street Bridge either. But I think it's useful to have it on the metro regional transportation system plan. Certainly, the, we we want the Sandy Riverfront Park on there, but the. This resolution does not commit staff time to this bridge. It doesn't commit us to building it or to spend any money on it, or take anything away from the. I would agree, more important connection through, from downtown to the Confluence Project. It doesn't do any of those things, it's just. It doesn't do any of those things. It's just, it just puts it on the plan. It, uh, we could take it off later, but I, I think it could. We're right in the middle of an appeal of the Home Forward program. I understand the bridge might end up being a part of those discussions. Anyway, I favor leaving it. I favor, I favor the resolution. That's why. And my rant is over.
Counselor Whitren.
Yeah, I just wanted to support Sandy's comments that I think having the Second Street Bridge on here and not having the bridge focus going over to the URA Confluence site. It, it, it looks like the council and staff are stating that this bridge, this other bridge is more important. The Second Street Bridge is more important to us. That is more of a focus for us. And everything I hear from my neighbors and the community is Confluence site is definitely a, an attraction, and that's where our focuses need to be. And a bridge, pedestrian bridge going over to the Confluence site should be our focus, not this. And I think we're just, we're highlighting this project and this project is going to be front and center. When I don't feel it should. So Sandy's comments, I take to heart and support her on that.
Counselor One.
I guess it's semi-confusing, but it sounds like, from what I heard Ray say, was putting this resolution or putting this on the map of Metro does not mean we're going to build it. It doesn't mean that we have to build it. It just means that we're gonna, maybe there's gonna be some funding available to more or less assess the feasibility or wantability of the bridge from the community. So I would like, whereas it's, to me, it sounds like it would be a great idea in theory that it would connect us with possibly the McMinimans, that Halsey side, ease of getting to downtown. The idea of it sounds good to me in theory. I would really like to see us not spend money on a study that would tell us that is either yea or nay. And if it's nay, then Sandy, I'll give you a high five and we're I'm all on board. I, I guess I'm failing to recognize that by saying we would like to have some money to assess this, that that means we don't care about the URA or that URA, that bridge comes second. I don't see the connection between the two. And maybe I'm missing something, but it seems like that's a totally separate project from this. And this is maybe farther along than that project was, like this came first and that, and I could be wrong on that also. And maybe next year's transportation plan has that bridge to the URA on it. I don't know the like timing of everything, but I just don't see the connection where like this means we, we want this more than this. And so again, my thought is like, if we can get some money to say yea or nay on this, it's worthwhile, great. And then this would be a separate project. And I don't know when we would put that on a resolution or to put that on Metro's transportation map, but that's just my thoughts.
Counselor White.
Yeah, I was, I was also a no vote when it first came out, but I think as long as we're still in the appeal phase with Home Forward, it makes sense to put it on there. Metro has the money. But if it, if it looks like Troutdale's gonna have to pay for this, I think that's when we gotta reprioritize. And if there's a chance that, you know, Home Forward can put their walk their talk, you know, they're saying they don't need parking because their residents are gonna have cars, then let's get them a safe way across that road and have, have some of that money spent for them.
Okay. Counselor Caswell, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that we keep our options open and there's really no downside that I can ever see with including these. And so I'm, I'm pro the bridge. And I just think that it's important that we are able to pursue these things in the future and that we plan for that now.
Okay. I'm falling in line with that sentiment as well. And I do, I hear your argument. I hear Sandy's argument, but I don't, I don't see the same correlation that if we pass this resolution, that we're somehow saying that we're not prioritizing the URA. That's, I think that's number one priority regardless. And it's just not putting it up front and center because it's not a part of this resolution or the transportation plan, Metro's transportation. Yeah, but I think what the other bridge is not on Metro's transportation plan.
Well, none of them are right now.
Right, correct.
So who picked this bridge to go on Metro's plan?
Well.
Why couldn't we pick, why didn't staff pick the other bridge?
I'm not gonna speak for Mr. Young, but I think the other bridge has a lot of other players that are involved that we're not really. I mean, it's got the railroad for one thing, and that's a player that's not necessarily coming to play the game as quickly as we were hoping.
Yeah, let me take those long time. First of all, you know, I appreciate what Counselor Lance is saying about staffing issues because right now we have two holes in our planning department right now that we are interviewing the next few weeks to fill, absolutely. But understand that we are not spending a lot of time in the Second Street Bridge right now. This is just one small step in literally five to 10 years of a process. That is just one small step so that someday, some people sitting in this room can make a yea or nay decision on the Second Street Bridge. This is just one small step for Troutdale. And I wouldn't finish that silly quote to make it ours, you know, one giant leap or whatever. But so that's all. And I believe, and, and the, the bridge and the URA, that's a whole nother load of bananas, quite frankly, because that is a much more expensive bridge because of the rise and run that has to go over a two acre UP railroad main yard. We need to get their permission. And right now, we're not gonna ask them to do anything other than get permission to go under their bridge behind the depot to finish our trail down there. So our focus is on that, the URA. The, the bridge that goes over the tracks, I believe, has been on our transportation system plan for a long time. And I will bet it's probably on Metro's already.
I don't, I don't know.
I will check. And if it's not, we should ask to be put it, put it on there too. I mean, I, I don't want to, we don't need, it's not like there's only so many spots we have on Metro's transportation plan list. I will check Counsel Whitren and I'll find out. And if it's not, absolutely, it should be on that list. I just kind of assumed it had been because it's been something we've kind of want to do for a long time. It's just, it's gonna be a bigger lift to do that. And that's one of the things, side note, squirrel. That's one of the reasons we've been discussing with ODOT, the possibility of a joint venture for a parking garage on the URA, which will allow us a better place to take that bridge to, because it already builds up the other side when you're dealing with the rise and run. Because the problem right now we have with the bridges is because downtown is like 50, 60, 70 feet higher than the, than the bottom, than the ground level of the URA. That rise and run for pedestrian bike bridge goes way out to the middle of the property, and that's what we're trying to avoid. And that's what makes it a little more difficult. So I will check, Mayor, and get Counsel Whitren an answer on. If that's on their list too, it should be.
Okay.
Can I make one last comment?
Yeah, Counselor Lance.
I am pretty darn sure that there is nothing about the URA besides the trail that's in that RTP. Because I went through there and checked both the current cycle funding and the future cycle funding. And then the other point is, don't we only get to amend that RTP once every five years? That was my understanding.
I don't think so. I don't know. I don't think so, though. But I agree with you. I don't think it's in their RTP already, the URA bridge. But anyways.
Well, let's do this then. You've raised two questions. I don't have answers for them right now. If, you know, on this one, I'm more than happy, you know, I, I don't think we have a time limit on getting this to them, but I'm happy to, Mayor, if you want to put it off to June 13th, vote on this.
Well, what I don't want to do is sacrifice the Riverfront Park for the Second Street Bridge.
Yeah, the only other thing I could do.
And if we are on a time crunch with them.
Yeah, well, the only other thing I, yeah, because we have to make sure that's on there to finish up our thing, our grant for the $2 million grant. I guess what you could do is that you can approve the resolution. I will not transmit it to Metro until I can answer these questions. Or is one way to do it, or put it on the 13th and we come back. I don't know that I'm in time pressure to get it done before the 13th at this point.
Dang, we should have asked Counselor Simpson when he was here.
Should have. But anyway.
Actually, the bridge of the Second Street Bridge is on like the 20-year plan. It's not in the five-year plan like the path is.
Counsel Rittman.
I, I favor adopting the resolution tonight because of the Home Forward issue. It just might factor in the appeal, which putting this off till the 13th is, is just, there's no advantage to doing that that I can think of. And if we haven't and we wish to include or add the Confluence, the bridge over the tracks to the regional transportation plan, we can always do that. But that does, that's not a reason not to adopt this tonight.
Yeah, I agree. And again, just for the sake of not sacrificing the park, I would rather adopt and, and then come back and discuss the URA bridge at a later, at a later date. Yeah. Yeah, so let's, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Public comment's now open on new agenda item number seven, a resolution endorsing the placement of the Sandy River Riverfront Park and Trail and the Second Street Bridge on the regional transportation plan. Public comment's open for people on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, in council chambers. Might as well.
Good evening, Mayor Lauer, City Councilor Tanny Staffen, Central Field Resident. You know, had the advantage of living here for a long time and being able to watch the council work. And sometimes it's smooth and other times it's smoother. And this must be one of those really smooth times. I personally don't get the bridge. I don't understand it. I guess I would say I more aligned with your CAC that wasn't in favor of it, your Parks Committee that wasn't in favor of it, your Planning Commission that wasn't in favor of it. I probably align more with those groups. And it's probably because I don't understand it. I am personally more worried about the Confluence, more worried about having the proper access to that. That is the world that I live in, understanding the importance of it and making sure that we, we do that and do that correctly. So for me, the Second Street Bridge is secondary. But the access to the Confluence have been on the plans for many, many years, if not close to 20. And the bridge really didn't appear anywhere until, I believe, 2021. And all of a sudden, just in my opinion, it has leapfrogged everything. And I just, I don't need an explanation, don't want an explanation, but I think there's one out there somewhere. Because I think, you know, with all the things that we're doing, I just think there's higher priorities than a bridge. And if we think we have parking problems downtown now, when we land that bridge in the food cart pod, I think it's gonna just make a problem that we already have that much worse. But I'm sure that's all been thought about and discussed as well. And one, if I, could I make one comment about the utility? Would that be acceptable or not?
You got about a minute left.
I just want to say, we did a five-year increase, okay, before we didn't do the two-year. And just by my mouse math, before my iPad died this evening, I came up with 26% sewer, 38% water and 47% stormwater over the five years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staffen. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Mr. Young, I was just.
Just want to add something here. Is that just from a staff point of view, the Second Street Bridge is not a priority. We are simply putting it on a list of long-term plans and projects that we just want to set Troutdale up so that someday, if our successors decide that they have reasons and they understand the bridge from Mr. Staffen's point of view, that they can do it, that we've done all the background work to put it on the proper list, to get it investigated, to get the refinement studies done, so that it becomes a project that, oh, alrighty, it's legitimate, it's got the back studies, and they know whether they should have it or not. Other than just getting it on this regional transportation list, I don't see extending other than involvement with Home Forward, as Counsel Rittman pointed out. We're not pushing, honestly, guys, I don't think I'll see it in five to 10 years, even if you all wanted it.
Well, you'll be gone and retired.
I'll be gone in 10 years. And so this is like, it's not really a big time sucker priority for staff. It's not something that's amongst staff. It's being pushed hard at all. And then just plugging along with lots of other projects to get it to the point where we can get the ODOT, you know, study would be great, get that grant so that we can actually study. Is it feasible? Do people want it? Do people understand it? I mean, that's where we want to get it to. And this is just one small step in it. Believe me, the URA is the number one priority, and we're working really hard to get that project going and get the trail done and get it developed. That is gonna be taking our time, not the Second Street Bridge. I just want to assure council that your vote on this is not gonna make it more or less important to staff, if I put it that way.
Okay. Counsel Rittman.
I'll make a motion if, if that's all right. I move adoption of the resolution endorsing the placement of the Sandy Riverfront Park and Trail Project and the Second Street Bridge Project on the Metro Regional Transportation System Plan.
All right, I second. Seconded by Counsel One. All right.
I'm not muted this time.
Roll call, Sarah.
Counselor Whitren.
Yes.
Counselor Lance.
No.
Counselor Rittman.
Yes.
Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
No.
Cassis 52.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your concerns and comments. That's why we're here. I was just trying, I was trying to get through really quick. Tanny, I was listening, I promise. But I was trying to get through really quick through Metro's RTP, and it is very long, Sandy, and I cannot get through it quickly. So I got through one of their constrained project list, and it's not the URA bridge. I have not made it through the whole entire thing, but it is not on there as of right now. And I'm about 75% of the way through the list. I haven't gone through their other list of projects.
Funny, Mayor, it's on my screen right now too. It's a really long list, and I've only got through half of it.
Yeah, but I know Sandy's spent a lot of time on all that, so, but I, I believe you're right. I believe it's not on there.
There's no funding attached at this point, only for.
I know, we didn't bring it up when we went down to Metro Council Chambers and asked for the rough of dollars. I know that that wasn't, and that was for parks, but still. But I will leave this with councils that I think Shirley Craddock was a real Parks champion in Metro. That was her, that was her aim and goal. Counselor Simpson is a transportation, I'm not gonna call him the champion, a transportation-minded individual, and especially centered around pedestrian and alternative modes of transportation. So if this allows us to get some dollars to put a feasibility study, great. And if the, if the community wants it, great. And I think we have a really good Metro counselor that could help us push this forward when the time is right. Not over, above, and beyond the URA, because that's number one priority. Staff communications, Mr. Ray Young.
Hey, Mayor, hey, number one, exciting summer is here. That means First Friday is coming, June 2nd. A week from this Friday, we will have our First Friday, and the advertising is going out. We're getting, gosh, almost 1,000 people have already said very interested in coming. So the publicity is going really well. That's on June 2nd. And we are doing a new thing this year, as you recall, is that that weekend, we are doing the Arts Festival that weekend too, where downtown will continue to be closed. We'll wait and see how it works out. It's an interesting experiment, you know, we're gonna try something different, and it's. We'll wait and see how it works out. It's an interesting experiment, you know, we're gonna try something different. And as we've talked before in this room, if it doesn't work out for the Arts Festival to be there downtown in conjunction with it, well, it'll be the only year it does it that way, but it'll be an interesting weekend June second, third, and fourth, to see what kind of response the citizens give and the region gives to the events in downtown Trabdale. And the next is, of course, we're closed on Monday for Memorial Day, but this weekend, the lifeguards will be open. They are showing up at Glen Otto Park, and it's supposed to be hot, uh, or very warm this weekend, so it's nice to have lifeguards. I went by there today, and I probably councillor White saw them. They probably had two dozen lifeguards down there in training. They were working really hard in the cold water, getting ready um, for this weekend. So that was exciting to see. And uh, note that in June, we will have three meetings, uh, June thirteenth and twenty-seventh, we will have council meetings. And then we will have the end of the budget year, uh, URA meeting on June twentieth. Uh, and we'll also give you an update on the URA and the work with Capstone. Um, so make sure you've got your calendars at three weeks in a row in June. Thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh, we will have meetings. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, council communications, councillor Witcher, you're first.
Yeah, um, any update for a moment? Can I share a phone call with you for the summertime deputy?
Uh, yeah, that Captain Asco told me two days ago, he'll get it to me any day now. He was on vacation last week, and he said, get it to me this week. Yes, yeah, yeah, we're good in theory. I just need to get it from him.
Councillor Glance?
Uh, yep, I wanna thank everyone for a great conversation as always. Uh, and I also wanted to um, pass along that I did the Metro's strategic planning session, and I guess everyone was invited. It was great. They basically broke us into groups and had us, you know, what could, if anything was possible, what would you do? It was a great session. So if any of you are still on the fence, I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Councillor Ritma?
Well, I also thought we had a really good conversation at this meeting. I, I particularly commend the council and the mayor for uh, confronting our new metro councillor in a, in a serious way, not unfriendly, but um, the um, what was it? The optics of the uh, revision of our community enhancement grant, I thought was very well explored. I was trying to think of what to say, and you all thought of it before I did. So I, but uh, uh, I think they were, they were caught flat-footed. Um, and um, good job. Anyway, that's all.
Uh, councillor Caswell?
Nothing for me.
Uh, councillor One?
The last time I remember, I was, I talked a lot. I didn't wanna be known for the guy that talks all the time, so I don't have anything this time.
You have nothing? Oh, man. Councillor White?
Yeah, I, I listened very well to John Leamy when he spoke tonight, and I, I remember us, we've been asking for that all along to have some representation other than staff in that in that negotiation. And I, I think it's to staff, staff's benefit that we have that as well, because those people have been following it, working hard, and really doing quite a good job on it, so. Is it gonna be possible to add some folks to this uh, these meetings with Capstone?
Yeah, right now, and Ed can also, oh, he's been on vacation, so I'll let Ed fill it in. Right now, all we're finishing up is the exclusive negotiating agreement. I don't wanna minimize it, but it's basically saying, we're gonna start dating and we promise not to go out on each other. That's what the exclusive part of it means. It simply leaves the parameters to start the negotiation. So we really haven't started negotiating on those details that are critical to the community in that sense. But when we do, we will.
And then um, I wanna know what the next step is for the, this metro community enhancement, getting hijacked from us. That's how it feels. And um, I'd like to get really back in, you know, even if we have to take on the liability to me, that's less of a risk than what, what they're gonna come up with.
I, I just answered that. We have to wait and see what the I, the agreement they have with the other, the other agency is. So should they're gonna get it?
If they have.
If they have, yeah, if they've got an agreement with it, we gotta see what the agreement is, because they can't breach their agreement with them. And so we have to see what their, how long this agreement lasts. So we'll get that, and as soon as you get that information, we'll give it to all council members. I talked to Noel after their, I said, get all that stuff to me, and I will get it filed all out to council. So I'll put it on my calendar or check back with her if I don't see it in a week. Then what, councillor White, once we get that stuff, then we'll be able to answer that question as to how we can wrestle it back.
Uh, I got nothing. Have a good public works week, everybody.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, crap, you, oh, crap. They took it from you, Dave.
I thought I'd let somebody else do it this time.
All in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All oppose? All right, everybody, have a good night. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Slam shut. Yeah, no, I.